Welcome all of you to the Regular Meeting for Forsyth County Board of Education, August the 10th, 2023. And we will begin our meeting today with an invocation from Melanie Cameron from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. We follow by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner McDaniel. And I'd like to ask you to stand if you're able.
Our dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful this day to be able to meet and to join and to converse about important issues in our community. Grateful for the beautiful rain that we've received. We're grateful for this country that we live in, for our freedoms that we get to experience and to share. We're grateful for those that have come today to express opinions and pray for them. They will be able to communicate their concerns in a meaningful way and that they will be able to feel good about what they have prepared today. We pray for thy blessing to be with our Board of Commissioners, that they might have health and energy, that their families will be blessed, and that they might have wisdom and insight as they help to make important decisions on the behalf of the citizens of this county. We pray for our country. We pray that peace might prevail, that it might be in our homes and in our hearts, in our community. We pray that we might be patient and kind and respectful, treat others with civility. Give thanks for this opportunity, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the nine states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Cameron, thank you very much for being here. We appreciate it. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, if you do it remotely, please call 336-422-1200, and you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. That number again, 336-422-1200. And any member of the audience who's wishing to participate in the public session portion of the meeting, you do need to fill out a speaker card and give it to our clerk here. This is Ashley Meadows. I think the cards are outside. If you do not have one, and you can do that now if you have not done so. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project and authorizing an agreement with John Deere Electric Power Train LLC. And Kyle Haney, our Community Economic Development Director, is going to give us an overview of the project. We're ready.
I think I hit the wrong one. I apologize. Hadn't been up here in a little bit, so. Good afternoon, Commissioners. So this is a project socket that's been on the agenda for two weeks but had not had the name published. So today, we will obviously publish the name. I'll give you a brief introduction to the project and happy to answer any questions. So the item before you is a proposed economic development incentive to track John Deere Electric Power Train LLC. John Deere Electric Power Train LLC is a joint venture between Deere and Company and Chrysler Electric, which is an Austrian company who develops lithium-ion battery systems. John Deere acquired a majority stake in that company and Chrysler back in 2021. And so this would be a project together here in the United States to design and manufacture cutting-edge battery technology for off-highway equipment. It actually would be the North American headquarters for John Deere Electric Power Train LLC. And that would include office and production facilities for these immersion-cooled electric battery modules. If John Deere does decide to locate here, it would be considering the location in Kernersville, North Carolina, adjacent to where their current facility is, off of West Mountain Street. They're also looking at Grove Town, Georgia, where they have a facility. Looking at the project specifics, the capital investments, $69.6 million, most of that in real property and building and then machinery and equipment, as well as the creation of 87 new full-time jobs with an average wage of $62,951 a year. And just looking at the breakout here for the incentive, this is a 50% incentive over seven years, projected $1,320,720, which would, over 10 years, that would be, the county would actually retain 65% of the new taxes generated from this project. Finally, the state is also considering incentives for this project as well. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Kyle? Thank you very much. And I know we have some guests here, both from the Chamber and from John Deere. I want to thank all of them for being here. Thanks for your work for the Chamber. And certainly thanks, we have Mrs. Schnur here from John Deere. Thank you for being here. Alrighty. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition? Thank you. Just give your name and address, and we're ready to go.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Laura Lee with Greater Winston Salem Inc., 525 Vine Street, Winston Salem, 27101. We are so grateful for your consideration of this exciting opportunity in our community and specifically within Kernersville and Forsyth County. Greater Winston Salem Inc. is eager for this incredibly innovative partnership to launch in our community and continue to fuel this next generation of construction and agriculture equipment. This quality investment signals the importance of Forsyth County to the future of the company and the future of how we will do things within this equipment industry. And we really expect tremendous results from this partnership and can't wait to report back to you. Thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this initiative? Is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Whoever would have thought, many years ago, when I was growing up, my mother was raised in Waterloo, Iowa. And one of the things she always told me and my brothers and my sister was how proud she was to have a company like, she called it Dear John. I guess if you're from Waterloo, you can do that and get away with it. But they were, she really appreciated John Deere as a company, but also as a community participant. And I grew up listening to that all my life. And here today, I have an opportunity to vote on a company that is wanting to locate in a town that I live in, Kernersville, North Carolina. If my mother was alive today, I said, I have to tell her, look, they're not just in Waterloo, Iowa, they're in Kernersville. And so I'm delighted to hear that they're going to do that.
Okay, I just want to be clear, make sure there's no one else wishing to speak in opposition to this proposal. All right, hearing that, declare the public hearing closed. And I'd like to know if we have a motion.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Plyler. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bessie. Is there any further discussion? Yes, please.
Just briefly, I'll note that this is a lithium-ion battery manufacturing process that we have prospectively here, that this, this project, if it comes to Forsyth, and I'm very hopeful that it will, will let us be directly a part of benefiting from the electrification revolution that is underway. And my understanding is that these batteries would be particularly designed for off-road usage. And I'd also like to repeat a remark that I made in closed session when discussing the possibility earlier. While this is not a utility-scale battery storage production facility, if you see the opportunity, we want those too. Thank you.
Any further comments? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thanks for being here. The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month. And Christine Dowdell, who is our Social Services Director, and Jennifer Tubbs, the Director of Child Support Services, are here to receive the resolution. And our Vice Chair, Gloria Wizard Hunt, is going to read the resolution.
Resolution is recognizing August 2023 as Child Support Awareness Month, Forsyth County, North Carolina. Fair as children are entitled to financial support from their parents, Forsyth County Child Support Services continues to provide child support collections and family support. Fair as in state fiscal year 2023, $771,021,000 in child support was collected by Forsyth County Child. Fair as Forsyth County. 571,000 child support. Welcome to the charity. Fair as children do not receive adequate financial. Safe experience. Fair as the success of Forsyth County. Just in. Offhand. Fair as Forsyth County attorneys. As expected, children. On board child. Get support from those who are in. Fair as the Child Support Services. As the demonstration. That should. Well, as community. Child Services. 2023, the Child Support Division. And encourages all citizens.
I'd second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your work. And if anyone would like to say a word or two in accepting, maybe this is Dowdell, or someone, oh, there we go. Great.
I just want to express my.
Jennifer Tubbs. I have truly enjoyed.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate all of you. Christine, go ahead. Thank you. Appreciate all of you being here. Gloria, Gloria. Show your teeth. Third item on the agenda is a resolution acknowledging notice from Piney Grove Volunteer Fire and Rescue of its intent to purchase a fire engine and approving the purchase. Do we have a motion?
Nave approval.
Motion to approve by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt. Second by both Commissioner Bessie and Commissioner Plyler. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of July 27th, 2023. Have a motion?
Move approval.
Commissioner Plyler, is there a second? Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we have 12 cards, and we don't have any callers for public sessions.
Very good. Okay, just as a reminder, I'm going to be using a timer, and I'd like to ask you to keep your remarks to about three minutes. Let you finish your sentence, but I'll give you a little high sign to change. And we might, we might ask, since there are some vacant seats in the front row, I'm going to ask our clerk to call two folks' names, and the second person can, can sit right up on the first row, kind of ready to go, and we'll, we'll save some of our travel time back and forth to the podium. So, Madam Clerk, we're ready to begin.
Debbie Wrestler and Pat Schaus. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Wrestler, and I live at 845 Tomahawk Road, Manley, Winston Salem, but actually in Pufftown. As said, I am Debbie Wrestler. I am a taxpayer here in Forsyth County. Speaking of Forsyth County, I am new to the community. I'm from a lifetime of living in Florida. And in reviewing this meeting, I have found two key unsettling aspects of this process that's adverse to custom protocols for me. One is that you limit public speaking. But limiting public comments, as stated on your website, to a total of 30 minutes per subject. I have to defy the people. Feeling to listen as long as the public. Two, the second issue. Such issues and questionable perception. And then each of you can meet outside the confines of this meeting. That is the concept of backroom deals. I'm not accustomed to that, and I don't feel it's good. I'm. My incarceration. I attempted to read your document regarding the scholarship for an organization related to the end. Multiple questions. One, did the attorney? Two, is this included in a line item of your current annual budget? So where can that be found? If not, to the attorney again, add in an expenditure. Mayor, taxpayer dollars being appropriated to a selected group without the opportunity offering to any other. Biased and or for worse. Of yes. I'm this limited. I will close with the same. If you, I will listen to your, your justifications. Heard a great quote the other day, and it said, "I was born at night, but not last night." Also, sometimes one is integrity. Actually, not what they're told to do. Wrong is wrong, even if everyone is doing it right. Right is right. That one votes today into a right of no. I lived in five one months, I stick four months, I work very hard for. I pay my Forsyth County taxes. I want that money. So what should go for? I'm assuming. I expect it to go to take care of me. How about the residence? Heard something that you would even think. Of this money, my money, for a special scholarship fund for a certain group of people. Ever heard this? Other kids would like to go to college. They would like to have. Not at all. Not for them to request. Already expired. But. By the way, N double A C P is a partisan special interest group. Not represent a lot of the views. A lot of views they don't represent. One of their political things is they vigorously support getting out the vote group activities. Number two, they organize questionings. They support the migrant protest group of Black Lives Matter. If the Forsyth County Commissioners vote to approve this request for $10,000 to $15,000, I would let people ask for permission. I don't think they will because I think. The Supreme Court just. Letting people, racial groups get into Harvard and stuff these other. I think it's illegal. By the way. That's to stop this nation. And stop this.
Madam Clerk, you can call two more names, please.
Marsha Maxi and Terry Morazak. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Marsha Maxi. My address is 8917 Center Grove Place Drive, Clemmons, North Carolina. When I think of Forsyth County and the services that it provides to the citizens, I think public safety, public parks and recreation, public health, public schools, our public community college, public streets and roads, public water and sewer, public transportation and public waste collection. The county government's duty is to the public at large. That means everyone, we the people, not special interest groups. For county commissioners to be granting scholarship money to an outside group to give students, give to students of their choice is not fair or ethical. Instead, it's picking winners and losers based entirely on skin color and political affiliation. As I see it, this is not the role of the Forsyth County Commissioners. Citizens of Forsyth County do not expect one group or race to be favored over another. There is no amount of legal wrangling that can make this wrong right. The county does not hand out grants for scholarship money, nor should it start next. The county does not hand out grants for scholarship money, nor should it start now. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Terry Morazak and I'm at 6547 Cronusville Road, Blues Creek, North Carolina, 27009. As many of you know, I ran as a candidate for the County Board of Commissioners in 2022. I am proud to say that my opponent, Dan Betsy, and I ran a clean campaign by staying focused on issues. Like Dan, I too was focused, among other issues, on good public schools, health and public safety. As he quoted in the Winston-Salem Journal after his victory, in his and other members of the board who was interviewed for a story, no one mentioned their desire to establish a scholarship fund or award scholarships on special occasions who would request scholarship That's because it wasn't a good idea then and it's not a good idea now. Need I remind you that there are many constituents' needs in a larger community of Forsyth County? While it is tempting to be generous with taxpayers' money to reward every good cause, and it is a good cause, that comes before the board as special appropriation, it would be a disaster over time to the county board. This year's funding will become next year's expectation. If you fund this, they will expect it every year. That's why requests for funding for different projects and programs occur during the budget process lending up to the new fiscal year. The Budget Committee and the Board work together in the best interest of all the people in Forsyth County and not a selective few. Working together for the best interest of all the people is the mission of county government. Taxpayers shouldn't have to support the choices of a few. I urge you to follow through with only the responsibilities that you were sworn into uphold. Please vote no, and thank you.
Madam Clerk, can you call two more, please?
Yara Kendrick and Diane Tutt. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Yara Kendrick and I live at 2125 Walker Road, Winston-Salem, 27106. First of all, thank you to the Board for letting me speak today. This post was from Nextdoor.com. Never in my life I have felt so helpless, depressed, and just exhausted. We can't keep up. The shelters are jam-packed. This insanity has to end. The shelters and rescues are doing all they can, but we as a community, we are failing because the problem is animals coming in. This problem has been talked about before. Wake fix-ups have been done. Now is the time to think short term and long term to change the influx of animals, unwanted animals. We can solve the problem by sending animals to shelters in other states because all the shelters are full across the country. We can solve this problem through euthanasia. That's barbaric. Shamefully, North Carolina is the third highest state in number of euthanasia in the country. Other rural states have much less than we do, so it can be done in North Carolina. We can't change the whole state, but we can do better in Forsyth County. There was a meeting recently held by rescue groups, I understand. I was informed, actually. We need a meeting of the general public where everybody can come, including experts, vets, businesses, people who really have something to offer, ideas to solve the problem So, there are many localities that manage pet population. Even a state in Alabama just did that. Some states have zero kill, as they call, although they have to euthanize some. We should look at them as models. Spaying udders should be a priority to everyone in this county regardless of the income. If the Board of Commissioners and lawmakers in Forsyth County want to solve this problem, I'm confident that you can. Where there's a will, there's always a way. But you can't do it alone, just as we sit and we cannot do it alone. But we're tired of hearing about abandoned animals, euthanasia, breeding, pets being sold at flea markets, et cetera. We expecting some action now. We need to work together and we are here to help, really. So, just tell us what we need to do so that we can work through this. Thank you very much and thank you for your attention.
You.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Diane Tutt. My address is 147 Cedar Trail, Winston-Salem. I'm here to urge you to vote no to make a special budget appropriation outside the normal budget process, no matter how good the cause may be or how small the amount of money is in relation to the total county budget. It's a matter of principle for good and impartial government. To do otherwise will show favoritism to one group over another, as well as invite other special interest groups to ask for scholarships or money for other charitable causes. The need for scholarship money for all students throughout Forsyth County is ongoing. The request should have been made when the budget process and request for grant money was made available to all citizens and special interest groups, if there were such a policy already in place. Opening the door to a special grant request will open the door to many other deserving students wanting similar consideration. There are many private foundation, religious, and higher education scholarships available. You serve all the taxpayers of Forsyth County. Please vote against this special grant, which will establish a costly precedent. Thank you.
Jason Ford and Margaret Sturgis. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. My name is Jason Ford. My address is 1031 Glenn Day Drive in the Village of Clemens. Unlike the city of the Winston-Salem City Council, Forsyth County Board of Commissioners has established itself as being very focused on balanced budgets and holding the line on tax increases unless absolutely necessary. Its reputation of being wise stewards of taxpayers' money makes city dwellers envious. If they could, some would move out to the county areas to enjoy lower taxes and less rules and regulations. In other words, the Board of Commissioners has been a conservative with taxpayers' hard-earned money and voters appreciate that. That's why I see a slippery slope if the Board of Commissioners abandons its fiscal responsibilities and makes a special appropriation for an outside group that failed to apply for scholarship grant money during the regular budget process, if that were even possible. Winston-Salem is blessed to have many charity foundations, charity organizations, corporations, and businesses to raise scholarship money. This is not the time or the place for raising scholarship money. Vote no and keep your fiscal reputation intact. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Margaret Sturgis. Good afternoon, Board of Commissioners. I reside at 1106 Weatherburn Court in Winston-Salem. I've lived there for many years as a citizen of this county. I have, do not want to reiterate what's been spoken by the speakers before me, but in summary, I am strongly against ruling for this private grant for all the same reasons. It does not belong in the budget. It hasn't been done before. It's to a special interest group. There are other private organizations. Please don't think I'm against scholarships. I'm not. I've taken a lot of pride and pleasure in helping to start a scholarship fund as an alumni of an institution and mailing classmates, soliciting for funds and so forth as a class agent. So, I am very pro-scholarship and hope for the best educational outcomes for our students in Forsyth County. I also have some concerns about the finances of the NAACP. It probably will be addressed by later speakers. I am concerned about the fact that apparently from the journal articles, race was brought into this when it really did not belong. It does not make Forsyth County residents look good. We're better than that. We care about all students. And because there is a leaning in the direction of favoring a minority with this grant request, I did want to reiterate two legal events, one on the national level and one on the state level. And in addition, in the article, Ms. Watkins, in discussing the scholarship request, he had told the county, and I'm quoting now, "cannot donate money to particular individuals such as the scholarship recipients," and that the donation would have to be structured some other way to meet legal muster. It just doesn't sound right. It doesn't sound good that we're having to go a circuitous route to do something new and that we're bringing race into this. It just does not belong. Again, we are better than that in this county. I wanted to, someone had mentioned the recent Supreme Court ruling, and I wanted to mention that one briefly and also a lawsuit that occurred in Buncombe County.
Ms. Sturgis, it's three minutes and if you could just kind of wrap that up.
Okay.
What you described was fairly long, but if you could give us a short version summary.
The Asheville decision as well as, of course, the US Supreme Court decision, both had the same conclusion that these, whether it was admissions to colleges or scholarship funding by the city of Asheville, both of these were a violation of Title IX of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, as well as a violation of the Equal Protection Clause of our Fourteenth Amendment. And I'll end with it. I encourage you, please, to vote no for this grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Destiny Shores and Al Jabbar. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Destiny Shores. My address is 2905 Wendy Ridge Drive, Winston-Salem. I'm here today to address the issue of overpopulation and euthanasia in cats and dogs in Forsyth County. I know all of you are already aware that the county took over the animal shelter a few months ago, but you may not be aware that the increase in numbers of euthanasia are quite alarming. A lot of these animals have been killed due to lack of space, so this isn't really a surprise. The community already knew that this was going to happen. So, when the announcement was made, community members started coming together and brainstorming and really trying to do everything that we could to reduce the amount of animals that we'd be taking into the shelter. But we're normal people. We have jobs. We have families and no matter how much we try to fundraise or volunteer our time or educate the public, it's not going to help if we don't have the proper support from people in power or the proper authorities. So, I'm here today to request that the county adopt rectifying ordinances that will help solve the issue of overpopulation in the long term. As Yara mentioned a moment ago, there is a city in Alabama called Gadsden and they passed an ordinance that would require pet owners to spay and neuter pets over six months of age. This has created a foundation that would reduce the population caused by abandoned pets and unregulated dog breeding. Multiple counties in North Carolina have considered doing this over the past few years, but they've held off. So, it's left local nonprofits and communities responsible, but we really need help from the council. I don't want to look back in a few years and be in the same place we are right now. So, I urge the Commissioners to consider adopting ordinances that would create new solutions to the overpopulation problem. One specifically would be to require spay and neuter of cats and dogs who are fully developed, and I know there's going to be some exceptions to this for certain breeders and things like that, but that's the general idea. I also started a petition 10 days ago to stop the selling of animals that were not from shelters in markets and shops, so things like flea markets and things like that. That petition in 10 days has already received 300 signatures, which tells me that the community thinks that this is an issue and they're asking for your help. We really can't do this by ourselves, so I'm asking those of you who are in the leadership positions to please help us so that we can prevent the census counting of pets in the future. Thank you.
You.
Good afternoon, Board Chair Martin and Commissioners. My name is Al Wadu Salam Jabbar. I live at 617 Daffodil Drive, Cronusville, North Carolina, and I'm the president of the NAACP of Forsyth County. Let me start by saying, how did we get here? How did we get to this point? The NAACP holds an annual gala and scholarship fundraiser. For the last three years, we have not been able to have one because of COVID. We sent out letters to organizations, churches, even sent one to the County Board of Commissioners. I got a call from the board chair stating that another commissioner said to him, "The NAACP support and endorse political candidates." That's a lie. But you know what's so bad about that? We have two African-American women who sit on this council and no one approached them who could have given them the information. So, I don't know where these things come from, but I'm here to tell you. I spoke a couple of weeks ago about the Articles of our Constitution and what they explained very clearly to you. As I said earlier, how did we get here? I heard a lot of conversation about funding organizations for scholarships. Let me be clear. This commission supported Crosby scholars at a tune of $800,000. I say that again. This commission supported Crosby scholars who do give out scholarships to the tune of $800,000. Let me say this to you as the president of this NAACP. There has been shackles. There has been shackles that have been passed down from your forefathers. But let me be very clear and very precise. This NAACP refused to wear those shackles. If you look at the makeup, for those of you who are in the room, for those of you on Zoom, if you look at the makeup of this commission, you will see a large number of senior citizens. At this point in their life, hopefully, they will find something else to do and give younger people an opportunity, progressive-thinking young people, so that we won't have to stand in here and listen to a select group of people who have been, who have come forward to speak out against, "We never asked you for one dime."
Mr. Jabbar, you just need to wrap it up.
What we do is we send out solicitation and a sponsorship sheet. It's up to whoever receives them as to how much money they want to share with the community of the NAACP. Be careful, because I will watch you closely. $800,000, and we up here talking about giving anything. Thank you.
The last two speakers are Bishop Mack and Ralph Walters.
Thank you for this opportunity to come back and share. I must say that I am a little appalled at the history that was shared on today about the NAACP and some of the facts that were shared. The NAACP has somewhat taken a spin of being just for African-Americans with some of the speakers that have taken this podium, and that's not true. Since 1908, there was a race riot in Springfield where whites have been a part of the NAACP since its inception. A lot of the accomplishment of the NAACP could not have happened if we did not have the support of our neighbors. So we've always stood together, white and black, strong. It's good to see you, Mr. Bessie, at the gala on Friday night, and hopefully you could correct, correct those who get up here and think that we are just about African-Americans. We're very diverse. The scholarship that we're asking for, it's not just for African-American students. It's for any student that would choose to apply. And so any student in the Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System that qualifies, that would like to apply for this scholarship, has the capability of doing so and can apply. Dr. King said something a long time ago. He said, "Rarely do we find men and women who willingly engage in hard, solid thinking. There's almost a universal quest for easy answers and hare-baked solutions. Nothing pains some people more than having to think." While I've read about the restraints that may be a concern with the budget, let's find a way and think about ways to make this happen. Let's put aside the race stuff, the politics, and let's get children to school so they can learn and come back to make our county a better place to live. And that's what I want to leave with you. We stand here to make this work, and hopefully you all will vote yes for the scholarship and maximize the amount that you can do. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ralph Walters. I live at 5185 Ashland Drive, Winston-Salem. It's great to be here. It's not a question of how did we get here? It's a question of why we are here. The National Association for the Advancement of Color People is a de facto partisan political organization. This is especially the case in North Carolina because the U.S. Internal Revenue Service revoked the North Carolina NAACP's nonprofit 501 status on May 15 of last year. That's because the state chapter failed to file federal tax returns for three consecutive years, according to the Raleigh News & Observer and IRS website. They haven't been raising money because of COVID. They haven't been able to raise money because of the IRS ruling. The newspaper reported that experts on charitable giving said losing the tax-exempt status could hinder fundraising efforts and potentially drain the organization's resources through taxes on donations and fines. That's a terrible problem to have, but that's not the problem of the county government. A quick check of the NAACP's website speaks of its various political activities, including support of controversial Black Lives Matter. The National NAACP website is open about its political activism in electioneering, such as voter registration, getting out the vote, and precinct organizing, as well as support of controversial Black Lives Matter, as I previously stated. According to ABC News 15 in Raleigh, the North Carolina State Chapter has been a prominent voice in decrying the policies of the Republican majority legislature, most famously voter ID. The Forsyth Board of Commissioners should not play partisan politics by donating $15,000 to political NAACP, an organization that also has a poor track record of managing its funds, hence the revocation of their IRS status. If this resolution passes, then expect other political and private organizations to come knocking on your door next budget season to fund their scholarship programs. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank all of you for speaking today. I actually have, normally don't make any comments, but I have two simply related to facts. One is regarding our animal shelter and neutering issues. We actually, every animal that leaves our shelter actually has been spayed or neutered. So that's, I've got my own thing here reading on here. I'll turn myself off here. But I didn't get my three minutes. No, I'm just, yes, we do have an opportunity to, we actually, every animal that leaves does that. And we actually, after one year of our operation, will be eligible to receive additional funds from the state to actually help support spay and neutering program. And we actually offer our space at the current shelter to other vets to actually do, to actually have surgical procedures there. So we are working on that issue. It is, it's a big one, and I appreciate the comments. I will comment on Mr. Jabbar's comments about the Crosby Scholars Grant, which actually was an American Rescue Plan Act Fund grant. And it actually, Crosby Scholars, yes, they do give a last, the key for Crosby Scholars, they're a last-dollar scholarship organization. And they do have a programming aspect that actually prepares, 15,000 students in the program that actually prepares students to apply to college, be prepared to college, and all those kind of things. So they have programmatic pieces that operate on an ongoing basis, literally throughout the school year and actually some activities in the summer. So their, the money they have received are not actually paying their scholarships. They have a last-dollar fund that's raised privately, just as for facts. Thank all of you, and we appreciate you being here. And Mr. Manager, I think we're ready to proceed with the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration this afternoon. We have reviewed them in briefing sessions prior to today's vote and hopefully have answered all the questions. So I'll dive into the agenda. First item is number six. It's a resolution authorizing an agreement with NAACP to operate a scholarship program based on financial need for Forsyth County students to attend universities, the University of North Carolina System, or United States service academies. The agenda item has two options in it, one at a $5,000 limit amount and one at a $10,000 amount. There were a group of questions that were submitted, and we forwarded them to the NAACP. They responded, and our attorney, Gordon Watson, had provided those back to you. I did get a question prior to the meeting, where would the dollars to fund this come from? And it would be funded through the contingency line item. So with that, if there's any questions.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
I think there are two options. Which option?
Well, the first one is the motion to approve the $10,000.
Okay.
So we'll start with that.
Motion to approve for the $10,000 for scholarships. Is there a second?
I would like to make a second to that motion, but I don't know, based on parliamentary procedures, Mr. Watkins, if this would be the appropriate time to amend or substitute the original motion.
Well, after the second is made, then there could be another motion to be made. However, it could not be made for the other option.
Exactly. So I'm not making it on behalf of the other option. I want to amend the original motion.
We have a motion and a second. So you're suggesting an amendment at this point?
Correct.
And we would vote on whether to consider the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Be a motion, probably, I guess.
Need a motion for that and a second, and then we?
Yeah, she's making, you're making a motion for an amendment.
Yes.
Yes.
What is the amendment?
The amendment would be that the county set aside upwards of $1 million to allow all seniors of Winston-Salem Forsyth County schools based primarily on need to attend a college/university, whether it's two or four years. And although the details are, you know, not among us right now, I'm sure that we could, you know, work with the school district and the NAACP to set aside and facilitate this scholarship on behalf of the, all students and citizens of this county.
We have a substitute motion presented by Commissioner Woodbury. Is there a second to that?
Second.
We have a second from Commissioner McDaniel. I think there might be some discussion, discussion on that.
Mr. Chairman, we've heard a lot of pros, a lot of cons, a lot of faithfulness to each side. But in my humble opinion, I think we can reach a conclusion, but not today. I think we need to study both issues. We need to establish some type of committee who will sit down, red, yellow, black, white, whatever we want to have, and see if we can't come up with something that will do what you just mentioned a moment ago, provide scholarships for everyone. But right now, we're kind of in a hodgepodge, and we're really not sure what we're going to do, nor are we sure how much money we want to put into it, nor are we sure what we're going to get out of it. So having said all of that, I would consider that we not drop the subject by any stretch of the imagination, but let's come up with a subject we have thought very carefully of, studied very carefully, and had some idea of what we want to do.
Other discussion items, other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please.
Just briefly, while I think that our colleague's suggestion of a $1 million fund for scholarships, or broadly, has merit, I'm not prepared to devote a $1 million appropriation today, and so we'll reluctantly have to vote no on the substitute motion.
I definitely understand that. Chair Martin, if I may speak, and this amendment to the motion is the result of at least a week of thinking through this, talking with staff, talking with the other commissioners, and really listening to both sides of the argument. And I do understand that we can agree to disagree and continue to move in a unified way to make Forsyth County better. What I will say unapologetically, as a public school educator for over 25 years serving in schools across this state, is that there is no greater investment in a democracy than in public school education. So my thought is, why not the county, maybe haven't done this before, but as we look towards moving Forsyth County into being the number-one county in North Carolina, what can we do differently to support all students with, on a need base? And so in my mind, to open up the scholarship dollar availability for all students possibly that have need to attend a college or university that ideally will come back and, as one of the speakers said, fuel their scholarship back into our economy, that's the wisest investment. What I will agree is that this is not the ideal way that we should have come to this. I wish that the commissioners and staff would have been able to figure it out before we, to some degree, set up a scenario where we have a divided class of Forsyth County citizens, where I think at the end of the day, all of us agree around supporting all of our students to advance, to come back and make our county better. So thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would just add that if this motion were to proceed, there would need to be some sort of budgetary item, if we're talking about a $1 million.
I say upwards, too, but yes.
Well, okay. And so I'm not sure if the motion is really for a study of the issue or exactly what it is, but if it is for a set amount of money, that would need to be accounted for where that money comes from.
Any further discussion? So all in favor of the substitute motion, as I understand it, up to or toward a $1 million scholarship fund, recognizing there would have to be an appropriation available, at least a budget item available within contingency or elsewhere to do such. All in favor, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
And do we have, make sure I'm accurate. We had Commissioner Woodbury, Commissioner McDaniel is on the ayes, and we had, it fails five to two. All righty. So are we ready to move on?
Mr. Chairman, does this now revert to the original motion to appropriate $10,000 for?
It does.
The purpose?
Right. Back to the original motion for $10,000.
And if I may?
Yes.
To speak to that motion. First, I want to, in the interest of disclosure, if anyone missed it, I am a member of the Winston-Salem Chapter of the NAACP. I can attest that it is not an exclusive or exclusionary organization based on race. When the question of participation by the county in a scholarship fund came up, and the request was from the NAACP chapter, I conferred with the county attorney to make sure that my simple membership in the group did not constitute a conflict of interest and was advised that it does not, since I do not hold an officer or executive position with the chapter, nor do I benefit directly or indirectly financially from the organization or from this request if it is passed. It is my belief that the provision of scholarships on a need and merit-based basis is a public education question, and therefore it is not inappropriate, not inappropriate, to consider this as an option. In fact, I anticipate supporting such a motion today. I intend to support the other motion of a $5,000 appropriation. It is my understanding that the NAACP chapter, as a smaller organization with a smaller scholarship program, is intending to provide five scholarships, and the question originally was at $1,000 each. The requests that came to us previously at a meeting from the chapter... The request that came to us previously at a meeting from the chapter was to make it possible to provide five scholarships of $2,000 each. Having looked at the numbers involved, it is my conclusion that an appropriation from this body of $5,000 will be sufficient when added to the funds raised for the fund from other sources to achieve that goal. Therefore, I'll be voting against this motion, but I would anticipate voting for a subsequent motion to, for the $5,000 appropriation.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will be voting against this motion, and if there's a motion for $5,000, I will vote in opposition to that. And the reason is, it's been total disregard for our budget that was adopted just maybe a month ago. Secondly, everybody who has served with me, even the two new members, know that I'm always opposed to special appropriations. It has absolutely nothing to do with race. It has to do with our taxpayers. With special appropriations, we're mandating that every citizen be charitable, and we're choosing who they're going to be charitable to. If taxpayers want to be charitable, that is their choice, not mine as an elected official. So that's why I'm opposed to this. I'll be opposed to the budget next year when it's special appropriations. And again, I will say, it is nothing about race, and I resent that it has been said that I am. And also, I am sorry about my age, but I'm very proud of my age, and young people have every right to go down there and file to run for election.
Any other comments?
I might mention, I will not vote in favor of anything today in regard to the subject we're talking about, primarily because I don't think we really have done a job looking at every aspect to make sure we're doing the right thing and that we can make this thing work. But it's too quick. We need to study more, and I know that sounds like I'm trying to put it off. You know, I'm not making a comparison either, but I thought, you know, the American government dropped an atomic bomb on Nagasaki, and they had an article in the paper talking about this being the anniversary that ended World War II. I don't think we need an atomic bomb to do anything in this regard. We need to do what we've been talking about, study the issue, come in with an absolute educated proposal that we all look at. None of us have anything in our hands right now. We're talking about $10,000 here, maybe $5,000 there, a million dollars there. I mean, we've been all over the map. Let's get off that map and come in with some specifics. That's where I'm coming from.
Chair Martin, if I may, lastly, I would like to reiterate Vice Chair Wizzenhut's kind of precaution around special appropriations, which although I am not a, an opponent of special appropriations, I am an opponent of the process, because it seemed to me not to be fair and judicious, in my opinion. So I want to say that we could utilize special appropriations as a way to more equitably distribute funds to a lot of the organizations in our community, and that's just by looking at the asset that we have as a county called the Community Map Analysis, which tells us specifically throughout Forsyth County where the needs are based. And that could be inside the city, on the outskirts of the county, regardless of race. So I do think that, you know, we can, you know, utilize special appropriations definitely more effectively for, for instance, the item before us. And lastly, what I will say is that, based on the response to the questions posed to the NAACP, it seems that, according to the reply, if the county gave $5,000, that would meet the goal of giving each student $2,000, because the students have already been granted $1,000 as of the night of the gala. And thus, if the county gave another $5,000, then the $1,000 could be given to each of the five already awardees, if that's my understanding. And if that is incorrect, someone can, you know, correct me on that.
Vice Chairman, I'd like to lastly say, Vice Chair, first of all, I want you to know that I do not have a spirit of fear, but of a sound mind, and I know that the struggle continues. It is actually entertaining to me, yet understandable, that some don't value education in some sectors of this community. And let me be clear that I've never called anyone a racist. However, I'm reminded by Maya Angelou, where she shared, "When they show you who they are, you believe them." And this is my, this is an opportunity, if some of us have had the opportunity to have chosen a collegiate pathway for yourselves, then the stories about how we made it over may be more understandable. I am unapologetically black and a two-time HBCU alumnus, humbled to serve my district, which is red, yellow, black, and white, because everyone is precious in my sight. So if you believe that I make everything black, you have a right to your opinion. I believe this board will and has the potential of moving forward together with, from this resolution today. And it is my hope that we take away, each one of us, to connect, inspire, and lead the future. Thank you.
Are we ready to vote on this issue?
I am.
Yes. Just a little, not much.
If I thought I could say something today that would ease the tensions, I would do so. But I've been around just long enough to know that when certain tensions arise, I can't come up with the right words that'll ease them. I just can't do that. I guess, I just, it's not that I don't want to, I just can't come up with the right words. But I read something 10 years ago, and then an occasion came up, I couldn't remember, it was a prayer is what it was, what it is. And I couldn't remember, but thanks to the manager getting me acquainted with a computer to some degree, I thought of the, I thought of part of the words, and so pulled it up, and I just couldn't remember. It's not long. I couldn't remember the words to it, and so, but I had an occasion to be at a meeting a couple months back, and by the coordinators of the meeting, I was instructed to give a prayer, which is something I don't normally do, so I had to come up with some idea, and that came back to mind, and I did. It would be appropriate today, in my opinion, but I still can't remember the words, and I had thought that, I've got it written down at home, and I had thought, I need to start carrying that in my billfold because, or either say it every day to myself or at night, then I could remember, but I should start carrying it, and I may do that now, start carrying that in my billfold all of the time, because there might be a, an occasion somewhere that it would come up. It wouldn't offend anybody. It would, it sort of affects us all alike. But thank you.
All right. All in favor of that we have a $10,000 scholarship request, motion and second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay.
Nay.
If I hear it correctly, Mr. Platter, I did not hear you say...
No.
Okay. So we have two in favor and five against, the motion fails.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of the alternate resolution prepared by our attorney, which includes $5,000 amount appropriation. And for the record, the title of the resolution is Resolution Authorizing An Agreement With The NAACP To Operate A Scholarship Program Based On Financial Need For Forsyth County Students To Attend Universities In The University Of North Carolina System Or United States Service Academies.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bessie. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Now, additional discussion?
I do have one point that I definitely concede with the direction of the county commission in possibly supporting scholarship to an organization instead of a set aside that would be fair to all students, all citizens of the county, that, you know, I think that this, the county need to be very warm in welcoming other groups that may come after to ask for support, and we just need to get ready to deal with any of the effects or implications of this in a kind and very patient way. So I think instead of fighting about, you know, one group or the other, obviously, we have sent the message that if you're a citizen of Forsyth County and you would like support from your organizations, then you have a right to come and ask for consideration of that.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the efforts of my fellow commissioners, but at this stage, I think we need to put off any vote on this particular subject until we have had an opportunity to go into depth, study it, and come back with a concrete proposal that we can all agree on. And for that reason, I will vote against anything until we come to that particular point. And if you're asking how we would do that, I would suggest that you, as chairman, with the cooperation of the county commissioners and the staff, appoint a committee of whatever, three, five, six, whatever, to study that matter and come back within two weeks and give us something better than what we're trying to vote on now, because what we're voting on now is conversation that we've had since the meeting began. We all, I think, are trying to do the right thing, but the wrong thing is not studying the matter before you vote on it. And I just can't do that.
I have just one comment that I want to make, and that really gets at the issue of the concept of special appropriation. And special appropriations, to me, have been, they're nonprofits that provide services in the community that improve the quality of life. And I have supported a number of those over the last eight budgets regarding quality of life issues. That was kind of, I ran on three things when I ran for commissioner nine years ago, and it dealt with improving the quality of life in Forsyth County, and it certainly also dealt with improving education, and it dealt with improving economic development. Had a chance to vote to improve economic development issues today, and I probably the, I agree with Commissioner Woodbury in that process-wise, we have made some improvements in our special appropriations process, and for the public, those special appropriations are basically dollars, it's not quite this simple, but they're basically dollars that were not spent in the previous budget and/or were additional revenues, and they're typically for, typically, kind of, you know, kind of one, they're one-time, you know, contributions. So the issue of precedent that was, came, that came up a number of times, precedent depends on, there's not an obligation to vote one way or the other for the first time, and then an obligation for the next time. And I have watched that at the federal level in the last several years, and at the state level. In the last several years, there are plenty of times where parties and individuals, basically, they change their mind over issues. So I don't, what happens today, I do not see as a precedent. I see it as, if it passes as support for a nonprofit, and it is a worthy cause of education, and certainly to support, you know, North Carolina colleges and students in this community, which by the way, my questions to the NAACP had to do with how this scholarship was advertised. And the scholarship was advertised back in the winter to every counselor, it went to the school district's student services office, it went to every counseling office in every school in this, in every high school in this county, and it also went to every charter school, and it also went to private schools, that they handled that distribution. Applicants were encouraged from any place to apply. And the second piece of that was, has there ever been a non-African-American winner of a, of a NAACP scholarship? And the answer to that question is yes, there has been. And so we got a list of those by name and by person. So the scholarship, at least, the scholarship is not an African-American scholarship, and it's not just, and I think while the NAACP, members of the NAACP maybe, maybe, more likely support one policy, a party or another, the organization as it stands is not. And so I've sort of been thinking about it, we've been thinking about it a long time. And for me, things deal with, I'm going to support the $5,000 motion, simply because it, I have to look at, I did not support the 10, because that was, everybody has their own, what is a level that is reasonable that you may support? And I've kind of reached a peace and comfort level with that, and I will support it. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No.
We have four to three passes. We're ready to move on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And just so everybody knows, I've mentioned this to a commissioner, we frequently get requests on how can community organizations access county funds, and the answer is always, there's a special appropriation process. And so, you know, that will kick in in January, and it will be open to anybody who applies. And so that is our pat answer across the organization from the staff perspective. And so, and we will continue to do that unless we hear something different.
Chairman, may we take a break for probably about five to seven minutes, please? We've been going for some time.
Yeah, if we could do just five minutes, that'd be great. Get back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Winston, I guess, to the Board of Education meeting. I just told you, and it's like we have muscle memory. We have sometimes after 33 years of welcoming a lot of folks from Boards of Education. It does roll out of my mouth occasionally. I apologize. And so the items, these are the first briefing for our meeting on August 31st. There's a break of a week. The state county commissioner convention is held. Today, we have three discussion items, and I know Chris Murphy has a deadline. You're good? You don't need to go?
Yeah.
Okay.
The other one's planning as well, so I need to be here for that.
All right, you're good. All right. We're going to have a presentation by the Community Appearance Commission and your report. And I guess we're at, and I apologize, is it Anton Musav? Is that correct? Anton? And Dan Rankin are going to give that report. And you can, we have a third person you can introduce. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman Martin. Actually, in lieu of myself, we have with us today the Chair of the Community Appearance Commission, Anton Musaev, and Brenda Fullmore as well.
Oh, okay. All right, very good.
Good afternoon, Chairman Martin and the members of Forsyth County Commissioners. My name is Anton Musaev, and I'm the Chair of the Community Appearance Commission. On a positive note, during the past year, the Community Appearance Commission was able to resume many of activities which had been interrupted by the COVID-19 pandemic. These activities included the reestablishment of the Gateways Working Group, which is working closely with members of the Creative Corridor Coalition on prospective roadside welcome signage for Winston-Salem. This project was established prior to the pandemic, and we are pleased to be able to resume this work. We're also grateful that we have found a new experience partner in Creative Corridor Coalition to lead this project. The Gateways Working Group did an extensive field investigation of potential sites for monumental roadside welcome signage for the city. If you have the official commission committee report in front of you, you can see the scale placeholder signs were put in those images. If not, Brenda Fullmore, who is leading the group, can tell you about the locations.
Sure. I'm Brenda Fullmore, and I am a member of the Commission, former member of Creative Corridors Coalition, former Chair and Executive Director for about 11 years. So the location for the gateway signage is US 421, eastbound, west of Peace Haven Road Interchange. US 421, westbound, east of Highway 158, west of Salem Lake Bridge. And the next location is I-285, northbound, north of South Main Street Interchange. We had six locations. We were working with the North Carolina Department of Transportation, getting advisement from them. So we have narrowed the locations down to three locations. Because of the other three locations, that was with the Beltway, that's a future Beltway to our city, so we won't look at that right now. That would be a phase two. But in phase one, it's these three locations, and we're looking for monumental type signage for our entrance and exit of Winston-Salem. You know, we're known for the city of arts and innovation, and we want creative monumental signs to represent that. Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. To continue the report, the Education and Awards Committee spent last year planning for the 18th Community Appearance Awards Program, which was held on May 31st of this year at the Gray Auditorium in Old Salem. The keynote speakers for this event were Kelly McChesney, Public Art Director at the Office of Raleigh Arts, and Derek Coulter, an artist based in Raleigh. Their keynote address discussed the importance of public art in communities. The CAC sponsored this biannual awards program to honor the efforts of businesses, individuals, and community groups who have made a positive impact on the appearance of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. Also, while the full-scale Community Roots Day had to be canceled last year, smaller-scale volunteer planting events were held in early 2023. And it is our hope that we will be able to hold the full Community Roots Day again this fall. And that will be the 28th. In 2022, the Technical Advisory and Project Review, TARP, Committee did not receive any publicly funded projects submissions which warranted committee reviews. The TARP Committee looks forward to resuming its work of reviewing and providing design input on proposed projects in 2023. We appreciate the ongoing support of the City of Winston-Salem Council, Forsyth County Board of Commissioners, and the City County Planning Board. We're hoping that 2023 will be a productive year for the CAC as it continues to work to improve the visual character and aesthetics quality of Winston-Salem and Forsyth County. As always, our members and I welcome suggestions for potential programs and partnerships that we could undertake to better serve our community. Thank you.
Thank you for the work that you do. And that was a great, I went to the awards program, and it was really a well-done event and great slides, good speakers. So commendations on that, and I appreciate the welcome signs, too, that good thinking for the six overall with the Beltway. And I picture those locations, they're great. Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Chairman.
You know, I just happened to have a thought, and I've seen this before done in South Carolina, which is not saying South Carolina really knows what they're doing, because sometimes they don't. But if you had something that you would never forget, and you can always talk about, and the first thing that came to my mind was a 16-foot bigger-than-life picture, or, well, I guess you could call it a picture of Don Martin waving as you come in and waving as you go out. You'd never forget that.
And you saw that in South Carolina?
In South Carolina, just before you get to Myrtle Beach.
Just mentioned, one of the suggestions was to have interchangeable signage, so that might be possible.
Changing people, rotating, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have a planning update from Chris Murphy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman, members of the county commissioners. Good to be back before you. I did not include the CAC as part of my update, because I knew that they were going to be here, but I will echo Chairman Martin's sentiments. That was a great event, and we really appreciate all the work that the Community Appearance Commission does put in. With that, I will just try to be brief. I know you do have a number of other items to go over today. Both of these text amendments, UDO CC22 and UDO CC23, were just adopted by you back at the end of July, but of course, those, that was Historic Resources Commission and some non-substantive changes that we brought before the Commissioners. During the discussion of UDO CC23, there was a desire to have staff investigate possible approaches to encourage preservation of vegetation for the required buffers in the PRDs, and we'll be glad to do that. It's not an easy task to tackle in that, you know, a lot of times, there aren't a lot of incentives that are kind of left on the table. Unfortunately, with a lot of our PRDs, they leave a lot of density on the table as it is now, so density incentives wouldn't work. And of course, you know, a lot of times, whenever they're going in doing the grading, if you leave small swaths of trees, it actually becomes a detriment to the PRDs. This is what most PRDs look like whenever they're coming in, and you've got the kind of the bottom areas, and then you've got some ribbons along the perimeters, and then you've got some thoroughfare overlay, or excuse me, some thoroughfare open space, and a lot of times, those end up being planted just because of the way the topo and the grades work out. But again, we'll be glad to look at that going forward, but I can't make any promises. But Kirk did mention that to me after the July meeting. Coming to you soon will be UDO CC24, which is a continuation of whenever UDO Clear Code was adopted in the early 2020s. Man, that sounds strange to say. We did promise that there would be additional graphics added to this document. And Dan has left, but Dan is the person who has been creating these graphics, and it's a series of 90, I think it's 94 additional graphics that will be added to the UDO. It does not change any regulations, it just helps illustrate the regulations that we have. The images that are on this screen were some images that were included with the original adoption of UDO Clear Code, and we have continued those, that same style of drawing and illustration for this next series of graphics that we've added. So again, that will come before the Commissioners. It's going to City Council in September, so it will come to the Commissioners probably sometime in September would be my, September, October would be my anticipation. But these are just a number of those graphics, and you know, some are new graphics, some are replacing existing graphics. The image on the left is the new graphic here, the image on the right is the old graphic, the image on the left, I think, does a better job of kind of explaining how you go about measuring those different parking elements. Something that this, the Board of County Commissioners has experienced, and also the City Council has experienced, are some issues with our current residential building multifamily zoning requirements that sometimes require folks to use a more intense district than they really need to from a density standpoint. RM18 is the only district that allows height of 60 feet in residential building multifamily. And you know, if you're doing residential building multifamily, sometimes you need to do three and four-story buildings, so we're going to be looking at revamping those regulations. Some of the things that the Commissioners have found on some of the cases are RM5-type densities, where they're doing five units to the acre, but they have to use RM8 because RM5 limits you to having no more than four attached townhomes. So those are some of the things we're going to be investigating that will come forward to both the City Council and the County Commissioners over the next year. Our biggest work project for the past year and the year going forward, and part of the fiscal year following that, will be Forward 2045, our new comprehensive plan. I know I've mentioned it several times, Amy Crum, who is our Assistant Planning Director, spoke to you at the last briefing update that we gave. We have been doing a lot of work on that, and I will get to that in a few minutes, but we have done extensive surveys, we've done a lot of public outreach, we're going to have some drop-in sessions coming this fall. And then, of course, you know, our continued effort for economic development, you had an item that you voted on earlier, I believe you might have another item you're getting ready to be briefed on, but our staff works closely with Greater Winston-Salem, Inc., the city's Economic Development Recruitment Arm, and the county's Economic Development Recruitment Arm on economic development initiatives, and we're very proud of those efforts. Transitioning a little bit to development-related trends, if you'll look at the second quarter permits, revenue or permit values, we are very close, 2022 to 2023, a slight decrease, but that just kind of shows that, you know, we're holding steady, we're not, I don't think we're going to see a trend downward. We're certainly a little bit cooler than we were in 20 and 21, as far as our permit volume, whenever folks were at home and folks were doing a lot of renovations, and a lot of new construction was coming out of the ground. That's also reflected in the non-residential permit values. We are slightly behind where we are in the second quarter of this year compared to the second quarter of last year. And this just kind of breaks down the permit sectors based on the permit value, primarily residential, some institutional, some commercial, but commercial office and multifamily is all about equal. If you look at the number of new residential units permitted, 22 to 23, we are ahead of last year. Last year, at this point, we had issued 315 new units, and so far this year, we have That's just a map that shows the geographic distribution of our various permits that have been issued over that quarter. Transitioning to permitting, plan review, and inspections updates, I've mentioned it before, but we did do an upgrade to our city work system, and we have transitioned totally to electronic plan review and submittal. And I've mentioned, again, I have mentioned that before, but that's been a tremendous benefit for us, because we have had, especially in the permit office, some staffing transition issues. We're currently five members short in our permit office, and whenever you only have 11 folks in a permit office, that's a lot of vacancies. Luckily, overall, for the department, we're only at about 85% vacancy. We have 10 out of our 67 positions that are vacant, but whenever you have five in one division, that's a lot. But again, we've been able to manage. Last fiscal year, we issued 22,000 permits out of our office. I did mention we have five planning staff vacancies, we're in the process of filling those now. We're also in the process of filling the permit office. I think we have two or three new folks getting ready to start in the permit office and in the, on the planning side within the next month. If you notice, all, last year, we did, last fiscal year, we did almost 77,000 inspections on construction work. And all of those inspections were done within our acceptable range. We tried to get to all requested inspections within one day, and our goal is to meet 90% of that. And generally, for the year, I think we were about 94% of inspections within one day. Little additional information on Forward 2045. You've seen this before, kind of where we are over the spring and the summer, we've met with a lot of boards and commissions. We have also met with identified stakeholder groups from the community. We, our survey platform is active, I believe it was about ready to go live the last time that we were here, and that is hosted on our dedicated website for the comp plan, which is forward2045.com. We're going to have the formal public outreach phase that will begin this fall. Will be a series of public meetings. The first series of those will be the in-person events that will come up in basically all of October. Following those, we'll go back, we'll take the information from the surveys, we'll take the information that we get from the in-person meeting, and we will come up with, you know, begin formulating some of what those goals, large-picture goals are. We'll also have a, some in-person workshops this coming spring of '24 for the land use and growth management aspect of the plan. And then we'll have, once we've come up with a draft plan, we'll have another set of in-person meetings. So where we are now, as we gather input, we'll start developing those recommendations, we'll finalize the layout and design, and then again, as we move, we hope to have the adoption in fall of 2024. Public meeting and outreach, we have had over 1,500 responses to our survey in three months. We've had over 2,000 unique page visits. As far as outreach, we've had eight different events that we've attended that totaled over 18 different days. That included the fair, Walckertown Festival, we recently did the Cobblestone Market, we had a trivia night back earlier this spring. Upcoming outreach, we're going to be at the fair again, we're going to be at La Fiesta, we're going to be at the Downtown Jazz Event, which is actually this coming Friday, and several other events, all leading up to the main thrust of the public outreach, the in-person meetings in October. We've also, again, we did meet with boards and commissions, 14 different boards and commissions, we met with eight private and nonprofit groups, and we did have nine other stakeholder group meetings. As far as the public meetings, these dates are a little more finalized than what I have on here, but again, we are trying to do all these events in October. Those dates that were down as potential dates for November, we actually are doing all these events in the month of October. So we're going to be very busy. We tried to be geographically dispersed. We have some within the city, we have some on the east side of the county, we have some in the north, north-north-east side of the county, some in the northwest, and some in the southwest. So again, be on the lookout for some more information related to that as we move forward. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Chris.
I don't have questions, just observation and comment every time I, if I don't think of it otherwise, every time I see you, I always think of something about
I'm sure.
planning, keep me on my toes. In regard to street yard plantings, and I know I'm not the only one that sees this, and there are right many cases all across the city and county, probably worse than the city, it's probably more of it in the city and maybe Kearnsville. The plantings at intersections, the intersections is probably not as bad as really high-traffic businesses. I guess I got the plantings planted by the code, and what happens is if they get overgrown a little bit, they cut down on you. Site distance, it's a hazard. Do you want me to start writing down all of the ones that I run across?
You can write them down, but there's not much I can do about them.
Well, you can change your conditions.
I can change the ordinance, I can't go out and cut the bushes.
Well, you wouldn't want to do that anyway, you'd rather change the ordinance.
Actually, I have a staff member who retired several years ago, who probably would have gone out and done that.
Well, I'll just keep my notebook then and see how many I've run across, and you better be glad my travels is not too awful far, it's pretty much on the east side.
Well, you know, I mean, those things, I think you probably would find that more of a problem on, we do require street yards on private access easements that serve more than one commercial property. So whenever you're leaving those, you probably would have more of a conflict there, because, you know, whenever you're looking at the street yard on a public right-of-way, it's going to, you know, generally coming off the public pavement, you're going to be 10, 15 feet off, and that street yard is going to start back on your property, but in those situations where you have those private access easements, and you're leaving a business to go on like the internal street, you don't have that same thing, because the property line starts where the pavement ends. So that's something we can take a look at.
Any other questions for Chris?
Thank you. I hate to run, but I got to get to a planning board meeting at 4:30, so thank you.
Thank you very much. And Courtney, last but not least, as a presentation, please come forward, and I'm like Chris, I have two retirement receptions to get to back-to-back, and I'm going to turn the meeting over to Vice Chair Wizzenhut, and thank you for being here. At least the two of us in this group had a chance to meet earlier on part of what you're going to talk about today, so I don't feel like I'm missing everything that you're sharing. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, have a good time.
Thank you. I can drive and get to those places. They're mine.
Been a while, so I think I remember how to pull it up. There it is. There you go. Yeah, you got it. Okay.
Thank you for moving that off the screen.
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it.
That way I can read it, too. Okay, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm going to present to you an update on Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities, and I will try to keep it brief. Let me see if I can advance it. There we go. I really want to focus on three different topics. One, I'm just going to give you an overview of our budget process. We just wrapped up our budget in June, so I'll give you a highlight of that. And then I've got two capital projects that I want to share with you that impact the county. And then last, I just have an update on the lift station discussion in outside county reserve fund. So we'll start with solid waste. For FY '24, we requested $910,000 in budget appropriations to fund three different solid waste projects. There's improvements that need to be made at the front entrance of Haynes Mill Road. We're doing some property development at a property that we call Evo, which is where we borrow soil for our operations. And then also, we have to do some pavement repair and replacement at our landfill facility. This is a solid waste expense summary. We've got it broken down into different categories, personnel, supplies and services, debt services, and NCMLC payments. This is a mechanism we use to lease our vehicles and equipment. Overall, the year-to-year change was 6.14% increase. This is a comparison of our solid waste disposal rates compared to other publicly-owned landfills and transfer facilities within the state. As you can see, we're very competitive with our rate. We charge $36 a ton at Haynes Mill Road for municipal solid waste disposal. On the solid wa, on the water and wastewater side, our budget year appropriations was $69.5 million to fund 17 different water and wastewater projects. Again, this is the expense summary for the water sewer side, broken down in the different categories, and they still can't see the main number here. So over our, overall, our year-to-year increase in our budget was 4.65% increase, which I think is very good considering, and I'll show you on this next slide. Our year-to-year increase just under supplies and services was $3.8 million. 95% of that was just the cost of inflation, and you can see 32%, roughly $1.2 million is just the cost of chemicals that we use at our water and wastewater plant. So we are really seeing a lot of significant impacts just on the costs of materials, chemicals, fuel, as everybody else is encountering as well. And then a comparison of rates on the water and sewer side amongst our peers in North Carolina, we've got Greensboro, Durham, Charlotte, Raleigh, and High Point. And you can see our, the average cost for a customer, and this is a monthly cost, of course, we bill bi-monthly, but our customers, on average, are paying about $50 a month for both water and sewer. We did have an increase to support all those inflationary, those increased costs. We had a 7% increase that was approved and went into effect in July. Overall, 7%, it ended up being about 5% for water service, 9% for sewer service. So capital improvement projects, I want to update you on the Highway 65 Waterline Project. This is a map that shows the limits of this project. It's in northern Forsyth County, near Rural Hall. And just a little bit of background, Forsyth County applied for a community development block grant to extend water along Highway 65. Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities is going to administer that project, and it's going to be conveyed to the city of Winston-Salem for ownership and maintenance once it's complete. In lieu of that CDBG grant, the city of Winston-Salem received $3.1 million in funds to fund this project from North Carolina American Rescue Plan Act funds. It's a mouthful. We have selected a engineer to do the design, bidding, and construction administration services. That engineer is Hazen and Sawyer. And just a schedule update, the survey and geotechnical work have been completed. The engineer is working on design drawings right now, 60% design drawings are due at the end of this month, 90% construction drawings and specifications are due October 15th. We plan to advertise the project in February of 2024, receive bids in April of 2024, and then hopefully, we will give the notice to proceed to the selected contractor in August of '22, '24, with construction completing spring/summer timeframe of 2025. The next project I wanted to discuss with you is the Tanglewood Force Main Relocation Project. So there is an existing lift station in Tanglewood Park, and that existing sewer force main that leads the station has deteriorated and needs to be replaced. We have evaluated five alternative routes, and these routes were evaluated based on cost, total length, risk, environmental impacts, and any impacts to property owners. We have decided on a route, and the property owners that were notified in June that were impacted, that we would begin surveying. The field surveying is about 95% complete. Construction draw, 90% construction drawings and specifications are due at the end of November. We hope to have ISMA acquisitions completed by spring of 2024, and advertisement for this project would be in the summer of 2024. And this map, it's a little hard to see, but hopefully, you see my cursor here, the And this map, it's a little hard to see, but hopefully you see my cursor here. The lift station sits behind the stables at Tanglewood Park. The red line shows you the existing force main route. It comes up through the park, cuts through Clemens West Neighborhood, crosses Middlebrook Drive to where it ties in or ends right here. And then the new alignment is green, or the proposed alignment is green. It would follow the existing alignment till it gets to a point right here near Mallard Lake, and it would go south, really follow the property line of the park near the Par Three course, come up Idles Road, and then to Hampton Road, and tie back into the existing line. So we will be working with Dudley's staff on easement acquisition, and of course, bring any easement requests back to this board for approval.
I assume you'll seek to minimize the loss of that wooded area that's in the park?
Yes, we would, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I think where we want to run it is right near the property line, and it's, there will be some trees that come down, but I'm pretty sure it's somewhat clear if I remember correctly.
Yeah, I mean, there will be some disruption of the golf course, too. So I think there, you know, considerations there.
Yeah, we want to definitely work with representatives from the park, you know, on timing. You know, we've got the Festival of Lights. You've got, it's a very busy place with golfers and stuff like that. So we definitely will work around our construction activities based on what the park needs. And just a few other updates, private versus public lift station policy discussion. The question has been, the question has been, how do we best serve new subdivisions that require lift stations for their sewer service needs? So do we keep them private and let, ultimately, let the homeowners maintain those lift stations in the future, or do we make them public and turn it over to our system for ownership and maintenance? So at the county's request, we have been evaluating policies. We've been benchmarking what other utilities are doing and how they're handling the situation. We do have a draft policy that we reviewed with the Planning and Policy Committee of the Utility Commission. Also shared it with Chair Martin and Commissioner Limbaugh, and had some discussions with them earlier this week about that. So we're still trying to work through all the different, you know, things that we need to look at. One thing that we're doing right now is we're evaluating the cost difference to build the station to the state minimum design standards, which would, which would be what would be required if it was private versus our minimum design standards. So we want to know what that differential in cost would be to ultimately know what the impacts to the development community would be.
Courtney, for me, I was going to ask, do you have an estimate at least?
Yeah. Well, I can, I don't want to speak to that, but we are definitely, we've, we're going to hire a third-party engineer that has a lot of good bid prices and construction prices to look at what it would cost if it's to the state standards and what it would cost to ours. And I'll tell you, the main three difference to build to our standards is we are, we require backup generator. So if we lose power, we don't want to have an overflow, a sewer overflow. We require a little bit of additional space in the wet well. So if something goes wrong, we've got more storage time and a longer time for our crews to get there and fix the situation. And then there's some electrical things that, additional beefier electrical requirements that we have.
And are we comparing them to other counties and what they do?
Yes, ma'am, we are.
Okay, fair enough. I didn't hear it, but I wasn't quite sure. Okay, thanks.
Is there any differential in terms of flood risk for the pump station? I just, I remember seeing in a, in a case, it was only marginally related to this earlier this year, a substantial subdivision that was dependent on a lift station that was entirely in flood risk zone. It's the classic point failure source, where if you do get a flood and that goes down, then all the effluent from that is going straight in the creek untreated.
So when you say flood, like a risk of flood just from like rain, flood events, and/or I guess if something happens, or when we get floodwaters, obviously, it overwhelms our lift stations, and then sometimes we can't handle, you know, so we try to keep floodwaters out. So I, one thing about sanitary sewer services, they're always in the low point. So we do have to contend with floods and trying to keep rainwater out. But that's one reason why our standards are, we require more, our minimum standards are more strict than the state standards, because we want to avoid any kind of flooding, any kind of overflow, any kind of environmental impacts to the area and the community. So I hope, I don't know if that answers your questions, but.
We can talk.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, nothing on this. I got one more slide. That's it. So the outside economic development fund, this, these funds are derived from the sale of water and sewer outside of Forsyth County. And so this shows the balance as of June 30, 2023. There's $3,815,264.34 in that fund.
Are there other questions for Courtney? Comments? Richard? No comments?
I asked Courtney quite a few questions today. I'm working on the, there's six different, and could be more, six different types of pipe for water lines. You already knew that. I had to use the manager's computer network, and I can find about anything on there. Now, best thing in the world to find parts and things about tractors on there, I'm telling you.
Amazing.
It don't make any difference. What is, these scientists, all they need to do now is just look at the internet. They don't have to try to figure out anything much. But I'll have some more along. But really, what the bottom line of all of this is, is trying to prevent things. It's very likely to be a problem in the future, because these, these private stations that is not to the commission standard, if they fail sometime in the future, and some, the most likely thing to fail would be lift pumping stations, the pipe, probably not. And the pipes last a long time. Some of them 100 years, some of them 150, some of them less than 100. So.
Thank you, Courtney. We appreciate you being here.
Yep. If we can get a copy of the presentation and get it out to Commissioner, I know it'd be good to have. So thank you.
Mr. Manager?
All right. So just do a quick review of the August 31st agenda, the items we're working on to finalize. We always do a detailed review of the public hearing matters, and we do have one public hearing matter for that meeting. It's a public hearing to consider an expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project. And the name of it was somewhere here, but I'll turn it over to you.
Well, per our policy, it's still under code. The name's not revealed until the day of the hearing. So I will be brief on this one, but we'll kind of go over the high level. This is a proposed economic development incentive that would convince a, or try to convince a biological products manufacturer to expand their headquarters here in Forsyth County. The high-level details are, if they chose to, they would make $21 million in improvements, capital investment building and laboratory space, as well as add 50 new full-time jobs over a five-year period. This is a five-year, 50% incentive, and the estimated amount would be 300, or the maximum amount would be $324,124. Like I said, I'll give the full details of the company at the hearing on the 31st.
Questions?
This is actually about your presentation earlier today. Could you forward that, your slides to officials members, and I'm describing, you know, details of that project that we just approved earlier? I'd like to be able to reference those.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you, Kyle.
All right. I'll just do a brief kind of summary of the other things we're working on that will be presented in detail next Thursday. You've got a resolution to create positions at Forsyth County Department of Social Services in preparation for Medicaid expansion. I think we fully anticipate that that's going to happen. We have some, some funding that was approved that we actually have in hand to actually fund some of these that was really, it was for the purpose of Medicaid expansion. We said we need to get a jump on it. And we think the state budget is imminent. It's been delayed, but we are anticipating that happening. So we'll have the minutes for you of this last meeting we just had. And thanks to our clerk for doing a great job at getting those turned around so quickly. Have two budget and finance items, one to recognize funding that you've seen before for Operation Fan Heat Relief. And then you've also got some funding that's coming from the National Association of County and City Health Officials that will be in, basically, you'd vote up to, to increase the budget for. You've got two grant items, one grant from Appalachian Regional Commission.
I'm sorry. Can you, yeah, can you go back to that one from NACA?
Yep.
You said that was for what again?
Do you remember what that?
I believe this one is for harm reduction.
That's correct.
Is that correct, Kyle?
Oh, okay, fair enough.
Yep. Sort of public health harm reduction.
All right, thanks.
Yep. So two grant items, one $40,000 from Appalachian Regional Commission. And then every year, you see the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant or the JAG Grant Funds. The city and the county, the city of Winston, PD, and the Sheriff's Department kind of take terms in managing those funds. And so you'll hear some information about that. In the ARPA world, we've got a couple of things happening. Some of it is just some cleanup around compliance matters related to premium pay. There were some date changes that occurred, and so you will hear about kind of a cleanup to adjust for that. Also, Cure Violence is sort of hitting the ground, and it's off and running. So I think there'll be a presentation and update on Cure Violence. But we're also, we also have a resolution approving the agreement with Cure Violence Global. And then the city, we're reflecting the city's $750,000 partnership. It was a 50-50 partnership. And so we're reflecting those dollars in that. And then really also sort of forwarding the policy discussion about how we deal with the hole that's in the 25 budget of around $6 million, where for three years, we set aside revenue loss for that. And so our goal will be to, whatever revenue loss, as we prepare next year's budget in the February timeframe, we'll take those dollars and want to apply it to that $6 million that will carry us as far as we can one more year until we get into a revamp year and then that 25 budget. And so kind of a financial plan around that will be part of that. And Kyle will go into detail next Thursday about that. But the good news is, we sat down and went through all the ARPA projects and did a pretty early analysis based on the field work that Kim Shore and Ayesha are doing in the administration of that. And folks are spending the money. We're getting the money. The dollars are getting out there. And there's, I think, as they're, you'll hear from them, but as they're doing those reviews, there's, they're impressed with the work that's getting done. So hopefully can present that back. You also got a report, I think it is on your, at your place. That is the federal report that we have to submit each year. It goes into a lot of detail. And it's really our statement back to the federal government about how we're spending those dollars. And so, and they've done a great job at getting, getting that together. A bunch of contracts, I'm just going to run through these, and they're the normal things you would expect this time of year. Obviously, we're getting ready for an election season. So you've got ballot printing and packaging services. There's an agreement with Forest Services, one of the services we provide in coordination with the state of North Carolina, a lot of people don't think about, is the forestry program that's out there. And so that is funded 60% by the state and 40% by counties. So you'll hear a little bit about that. It's one of those things that a lot of people just take for granted. Postage, obviously, we send a lot of postage out, so we have an annual agreement on that. We are rapidly moving toward an opening date in October for the new courthouse. And so you've got moving services, and you'll see the work that General Services has been doing on that. One of the agreements is an agreement with Duke Energy around what they call kind of extra facilities for the new courthouse, because we're asking for a higher level of service, given that it's an essential facility that some facilities have. And so we, there's a payment we're going to ask you to allow us to make to Duke Energy for that purpose. Got some roofing repairs at Social Services, and so we're going to move, ask you to help us move forward with a contract with REI Engineers for design services for that. You have a number of agreements. You've got a resolution for a contract with Senior Services for home-delivered meals, frozen meals, and Congress lunch programs. Those will be coming through you, too, through DSS where those dollars flow through that. Also, for adult daycare and adult daycare health services will be coming to you, really just kind of the meat and potatoes of what we do as a county government. And then a couple of agreements with Exchange Club Center, one for the, for really children's services through DSS, prevention of child abuse, and permanency planning review, and the Child Family Team facilitation. So you'll learn and see a lot about the work that's being done, that we work with Exchange Club through that. And then also for structured supervised visitations, certain sessions and transportations for families involved in child welfare services. It's kind of an essential set of services that, that we rely on them to provide for. So a lot of good information about that. Two property matters, you've got the clouds rose and the sun set at the federal government around this land swap that led us purchase Doral Drive. We got the approval to do that, so that is actually closed. And it's part of this exchange with North Carolina Department of Transportation that's going to provide them to make improvements right there in front of Collidium North, the old SyWorks facility. And so Kirby will review that with you. You've got the normal personal property that we sell every year, so we're asking you to declare that surplus property. We do have a discussion item during the budget process. We really did not have good data around what was happening sort of in the competitive world around law enforcement, some public safety-type salaries. That work has been done, so there'll be a presentation. We're still trying to pull all that together. So it would be a discussion item. It's, that market moved a little bit more than we thought it did. And so there'll be some challenges I can go in and tell you that I know we'll be facing with that from a competitive perspective. And so a lot of information for you next Thursday across a lot of different departments. There was one item that was in there that was a property matter that I did not see on the agenda, but I saw in iCompass. What am I missing, Kirby? Anything?
We have a few items that we removed from the agenda that I think what you remember.
Okay.
That, that was removed from the agenda.
Okay, all right, very good.
Okay, you want to remind everyone about our 10 o'clock meeting next week?
Yes. So next Thursday morning, and I apologize because I knew there was something I was forgetting, I was going to get you the agenda for that, but I will get that out before the sun sets today, kind of what's on that. But we do have a session next Thursday at 10 o'clock in this room. The agenda was so hefty that we, we did a couple of those planning kind of community development sort of things with, and with utilities today. But you do have the schools coming in. She's prepared to give a big report. They're going to open schools in a couple of weeks. And so there's a lot that was left over from the budget process around schools. So you hear from Winston-Salem Forsyth County Schools, you'll hear from the Community College. You'll also hear from Aero-X update. That was a project that this board has been involved in that really dealt with drones. And so we're going to wrap drone-related items into that, because you actually funded a drone project with the Sheriff's Department. And so that will be part and parcel of that. What am I missing, Ashley? Remember? I know. We will get you.
If I may ask a question.
I'll send it, I'll send it to you. That way you can send it out to everyone.
Yeah, we'll get it out to you today. So.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to, any follow-up on the collidium? Are we coming along with that?
The.
Here.
I think they are still working through the collidium issues, the permitting kind of issues, so.
I thought we were going to be on a go for the fall.
I don't know. Unless we're, I mean, are we thinking about the same thing? I don't know.
Collidium?
Mm-hmm.
New building?
Yes. So, yeah, so construction's coming, is on schedule. There is the issue with the playground equipment on top of the roof that still has to be worked through. And so, but the project itself's coming along pretty good.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay. Vice Chair Wizzenhut, I would like to, in lieu of today's conversation, agreement and disagreement around the issue of our funding process, I do think it would be of great consideration for staff to maybe help the commissioners come up with a way to better inform the citizens around the budget process and the ways that they can reach out to us for, you know, any dollars that the county does expend towards any groups, just so that we all have the same baseline by which to operate. we all have the same baseline by which to operate.
So we, one of the reports, we are in the process, there are a number of reports we give commissioners every year that kind of get generated through budget management. And so one of them's a year-end report, and so you'll get that. There's an operations review report that you will normally get, an overtime report. There's also a special appropriations report. And given where we've been with the SC Connect system change, there's a, there's a whole, those have been delayed in the last year. And so we just were not, really didn't have the bandwidth to get those to you out. And but, but the special appropriations report will get prepared. And what that is, is it's a summary of everything that you, that you have, funding that you have provided to outside organizations, kind of in that special appropriations arena. And we ask each of those organizations to tell us what they did, you know, what they, here's what they said they were going to do, here's what they actually did. That report normally comes to you in the October timeframe. And so, because we're getting year-end data, both financial and operational data from them. And so that report, talk to Kyle, we're going to plow, even though we're in the midst of that, still that budget system change, that's a priority, and we're going to get that done this year. And so you'll get that. And then at the same time, we can talk to you about, you know, what the schedule's going to be for appropriations moving forward. Usually, we open it in mid-December timeframe, and we try to close it out in early February so that it can land in that process. Now, we really didn't have a formal process until a couple of years ago, and so it was more of an informal process. And if somebody sent a request to the commissioners, we would just include it in that alternate service level part of the budget. We actually have an application process. But, you know, the addition of a communications department will help us advertise that a whole lot better. And so that will happen. But we'll, you'll see a report of what we've done in the fall, October timeframe. And then that'll set the stage for what we do in next year's budget. That really is our process. So if you need more than that, we can.
I guess I would like to see something that is really just straight to the point, need-to-know for citizens based on the timeline, and just, you know, very convenient infrastructure around what the process is, and how do I go about applying, especially if I'm a small organization and may not have a lot of, you know, technical support, blah, blah, blah. But at the end of the day, just something very clear to the community so that there are no misunderstandings around the timeline, the process, and who they can reach out to if they have any questions.
We will, we will do that. And we can go ahead, getting that communications work done earlier is not a problem. We go ahead and get that done, and I think that'll answer a lot of the, a lot of the questions. I will say that there are always people who submit them late. And, you know, you try to apply rules around that, and, you know, that's why when we submit to you the budget, a lot of times we'll say, here's what we received that was on time, here's what we received late, and, you know, give that to you in that format. So people remind me all the time that they are taxpayers, and I know they do you as well, so that.
By the way, I'm a taxpayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodbury, I'd like to be fair to the staff, because they do really work hard. And in the past, I have seen them grow in the, in the space of communicating to the constituency. For example, it's online. We've had public session around it, and Ed and his team has done, have done a great job in terms of the online communication, in my opinion. So I think probably in the future, we need to do a better job in terms of making sure that we're witnessing what's happening so that we can share it with the constituency.
I just wanted to mention that I did see an article this week, and the House Speaker said the budget would not be ready until September. That's what he said. I did send it to Chantel, and she was not very happy. Neither am I. Are there any more conversations anyone wants to have? If not, I will see you next Thursday at 10:00 a.m. Happy weekend, and we are adjourned.
We are adjourned.